You brothers.
This, these rights are nice, but you gotta sign your names for me. I got pens in my pocket, but if I try to sign all that with them.
Someone who you don't need.
I see it, I'm running out of time.
It's handy. We're gonna play some time to tell some people. Making a word report. Do you know where that is?
Oh, really? That's the place, right?
I'm sure we need some playing cards we can use too. Okay, we're here to service your needs.
That's good.
I'd like to say something on that, but I won't just do it.
There, Jay.
When you offer you want, want to run some of the beach.
Love it.
You gotta hold it stand.
And you say. Hey, and I'm gonna say this on record. Don't go on my, what?
Probably not. Whatever that is.
If there doubt, no.
If you have to think about it, you should probably talk to them.
That's right. Cause she'd print it.
Tell me after they've been, I may print it anyway. It's good enough.
Yeah, I'll wait for it after me.
A lot of beach.
Well, well, it, it just, it's a long story to work with friends like mine, you don't believe in these.
Even they go to, they try to say, maybe the moment meeting on that, that's off the record. I mean, it'll be a movie off the record. That's right. That's gonna make us off the record. I was trying to get to what he said in our, they take a session, but they don't learn what I'm saying. You missed our pool night, missed night, because it turned like baseball. We go Friday night. Second, second game. Harry calls me. So I sit there, talk for a while. Fourth game, Christina calls me, I said, my two daughters come in the same night, it never happened. Must be made wrong.
Must be a little.
If that's somebody who called you, you would've gave up.
I would've left.
Something's wrong.
I would've, somebody come, play was wrong, pool again.
What'd you find out today where you gotta play this week? After I, isn't it?
Off, off, off. I don't know.
Yeah, supposed to be today.
Oh, I hope it's not very fun.
Hope they don't send you to league or something.
Yeah, I know about the one league. I don't know, I don't like it to be like.
I'm gonna accept it.
And Timbaland, I make a motion to approve.
You heard of this?
Oh, second. All in favor?
High bar.
All I know is that one baseball game's good, one wasn't no good, I got totaled or something.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
So will you fly me to wherever the game is?
Uh.
Fans for free.
Fans, fans.
I won't put whatever you're gonna tell me off the record. I miss these.
No, there's, there are.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Not there.
That's free. There's always a cost.
You gotta pay for fuel, man. And these hours. Is practice fine?
He's practiced.
He's practiced, right. And he's a lot of practice, takes the lift up and down. I really, no, I know it's, the children, that's girls are rated, that's all I get, that's all I know. Which girls? Timbaland's girls, they're rated or whatever, still kids. Seems like they had them around. I play, I play over. Like play over though. Jets, so I don't get too much. Cover a lot more. That space that we did, it's a little bit. Not much going on here in pastage. Pastage is a little more fun to watch. Yeah. Although I'd want to smell you, I guess we. Sunny. But later. Make a motion to approve?
I say.
We're gonna state that it's just, um, fairgrounds and, um, highway.
Fairgrounds and highway, yes. All in favor, I mean, we're. All right, him or those? Oh, they're getting smaller. They get smaller in there. Right, right.
Christine, I should've started checking the tree with that.
Yeah, it's only like four ninety, I think.
Oh, is it really? I didn't even, where I can do that. Really?
You can even, you pay, you pay ten dollars, you get one with a straw.
Really? They have a plastic straw, so I need to just, cause she always has a straw.
What kind of, is it Yadda Cup? You get a letter turn hella easy.
At basin? When you guys start picking, cool condition.
Should I make a favor to where you want?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, he saw it this morning. It's all over it.
So look at he's still over by it, isn't he?
In our Loveland County Clerk's School, by the June thirtieth of twenty twenty, every county will have the same, like you guys are, T one A and T two B, everybody will have the same accounting numbers. And they're not our numbers.
Even every county?
Every county will have the same numbers.
Don't they, they don't know?
No, I, no, we're one of the old ones.
My business.
A lot of them had went to like a four-digit number, where ours are the letter and then the numbers and then a letter. I guess in nineteen ninety-four, they, um, put a supplement to the, um, statutes that all counties would have the same accounting number, and they've never enforced it, well.
So I was gonna enforce it, so by twenty twenty, your term's not quite up there now.
That's why, dang it. Valerie, that's what Valerie said, I'm like, no, no Valerie, no, this is a definite, no, you cannot leave me. Which I don't think she's looking up every time. I just, for sure, my shirt, she knew that she wasn't not going to, cause who had to sign her retirement papers? So you were not leaving me, if I had to do it, you have to do it.
Oh, you'll go in and, you'll go in and Fred's triggered to run again?
Yeah.
Arlington is all the same.
No. I don't know, I mean, I've heard of few counties that has theirs like ours. I don't know what Grant has, I've never talked to Grant County, but I know Woodward County and Woods County, and I haven't really asked the major county what their numbers are, if theirs is the same.
Well, that's what happens, there's gonna be one county that has the way they wanna, and everybody's gonna have to match that one.
Well, they have a.
Yeah.
A volunteer group. It's Major, Grant, Woods, Woodward.
What, what, what you come up?
The other one, that have went in with the auditors, with O S U extension, and both their treasurer and their county clerk have went in on this, and they have been trying to come up with what everybody has, so it's not, so I don't think anybody will have this numbering system.
Some water, big old water bottles.
It's like a fourteen digit number, but I mean, you don't have to put that in each time, like the first one is your county. The second one is the year, the second two numbers, the next one is your fund, you know, so. They're just making it to where it's gonna be easier for the auditors. They're making the reports.
And they wrote, they wrote in the finish up.
Where's zero two county?
What?
Zero one. A token.
So that man will go in and make that look.
Ain't it?
We're two, what?
A token's the first, ain't it, A token county?
I thought it was A there, but.
A there, A there, you're right, A there. I'm sorry, I think I was talking, it's gotta be he.
I thought it was.
Yeah, we're number two county.
A there. They have a new county clerk.
Huh?
A there county has one.
And we took the transit over.
Has one?
Has a new county clerk.
Oh, no, I just said, no county clerk, huh?
Their other one came in the same time I did, she come in early. She just ran one, I don't know. Or she didn't wanna run again or what?
Yeah, I gotta stop and remember, you know, when you're in school, Walker, you're always the last, the last one. But there's the county staff, you're number two. So you gotta pay attention once in a while.
I was waiting, yeah, I'm really too.
Yeah.
Except for the, if they used my name, they called me all the time, I didn't, I'm the rest.
No, no.
Start with an A?
They did.
Yeah, you can't put that in paper either. Can't go into.
No boy, he said. He said, we checked, he said, I checked it out, he said, Cherokee people claiming it. He said, I went up to Cowal and checked it out, and the Cowal people claimed you too. He said, the Cowal people claim you from Cherokee, and Cherokee people claim you from Cowal.
Right.
Isn't that good?
What about the Lazenby kid, I guess, pretty neat? Lazenby. Haven't seen any paper on it.
Oh, yeah, he went to.
Yeah, him go to OU.
Yeah, from N O C. Glencoe or Euphor?
Glencoe.
Stop visiting, I get, I get behind it.
That's what I was talking about, I wasn't.
Yeah, Toby, he gets to bury in the air a little bit.
I don't feel bad, he can bury me over there.
It's a good thing, when you're the, when you're the chairman, right?
That was a lot. I'm gonna be signed for a while now.
Toby was waiting to see.
Uh, I was waiting.
I was hurrying too, wasn't I? What is it, day twenty-four? All day. Four twenty-four. All right. I'll catch up again after.
Well, we threw you off, cause our girl didn't sign one.
What? Oh.
I said, we threw you off, cause my girl didn't sign one.
Many times I'm on one.
Yeah, it's okay, we, we had arrows that. And Rick signed one in that spot, in this batch also. And then, are you, arrows on one? Yeah, right there.
Ooh, Jay, he can just take nap, oh, they're right, aren't we? And you're all right.
Sorry. Anybody quote that?
Jay takes nap in commission meeting, we're waiting on.
Okay.
Oh.
You're okay. We've had, we could take a nap in a commission meeting.
Roger?
I didn't get that one in the pile, Stan, that one's my fault, I'm tough.
I'm tough. Yeah, Roger said eight, Roger didn't sleep, wasn't he?
There you go. Here you go again.
Yeah, we did. Old film, I guess, yeah.
There you go, Jay.
Road crossing. We used to like. Forty or fifty, we don't know, this is on our paper.
Did you sign the bottom of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, my girls, that was my fault again.
Sure.
We give us three days off and we fall apart.
Come back to where.
They went to the little party, though, three days, it's not messed them up.
I drove back and forth soon.
I know.
I couldn't let you.
How's that?
Watch those two baseball games.
That one wasn't very good, I heard.
No, no, they played better the next day, but I didn't get to see that one. So. Cynthia's, um, two girls come out to do their layer.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
They go to spray and had to come, you know. And so, we cleaned windows, and, um, okay, this time I checked.
What?
Is that my arrows?
And, uh, they were cleaning windows, they did, oh, they did a tremendous job.
Those girls are good girls.
They, they, yeah. I was teasing them, I said, one of you's supposed to be on the inside, one of you's supposed to be on the outside, so then when you have a streak, you can say, ah, that's on her side.
Yeah.
So no, they would do the outside together, then they'd come inside and do the inside one together. They fold in and out, but I told them, I said, we took the screens off, Reagan and I took the screens off and was washing them. And so I said, it's whatever you guys wanna do, they said, well, do you care if we just go down? All right, care what's done.
I just, I just wish I'd have been there when they got in a fight, with a city fight before the softball game ever started.
Them girls had few lose. But then during the, um, flag football, you know, for the college football, they would be tackling one another, and Aaron Poggers would go, don't worry, they're related, they can tackle one up. Stop it, stop encouraging them. You know, they worked hard.
We had, we had girls, and that powder, I had girls bleeding. Never getting after it.
Well, we did, two different years that basketball players got hurt.
Dislocated fingers and. Then they said that we didn't have the football field, so they decided not to do it.
I used to say they weren't gonna get hurt.
I thought it was pretty fun, myself, watching them. They got wound up, some of them girls did. It's five hundred forty-two.
You're all right.
I thought there's gonna be a whole classroom full of us next week, so we. Valerie and her two girls are known.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you and your two girls are known.
We're going to look at.
Yeah, what's it?
It's gonna be in the classroom?
Yeah.
Is there anything I need to take?
I thought purchasing one.
Well, I didn't know if they had any notes or.
Yeah, they'll give you a book over there.
Yeah, but yeah, that's the one I already went to.
Yeah, you and, um, Laura and Lena have already went to it, yeah.
I could go again, probably.
This will be the third time I've went, I learn something every time.
Once as I did last time.
Wondering if they're doing another open, the open meetings. Deal like they did that year, it's. They did one in, what was that, twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen? I went to one over.
They talk about the one at Eden?
Or the one in Woodward.
Other words, one on Woodward, I've never went to one.
Also, Lady Cum did, it was real squeaky voiced and.
No.
Ah, I.
This is the guy.
You know, like, who I'm talking about, that gal that does the open.
Suzanne Spears.
Suzanne Spears, yeah, yeah.
I went to hers.
She'd drive me nuts, her voice was.
They had, I don't remember, it was put on by like, some of the DAs or something, they had one out at Diamond.
I can actually tell you when it was, because those were. So about the time Born was.
Oh, favorite, right. That's what it was. Blank, get the blanky, bling, I forgot how many you got down there.
Not a whole bunch.
Here's one. And one for two. And one for three.
Those were interrupting classes.
Now, the one out of, um, Diamond, Chris Boyne's dad put it on. And I wanted to go to that one, but there's something going on.
The tar and the top.
Top, I do, yes.
I don't know what was going on, and I didn't get to make it to it.
If you would like to contact that, hey, you need to go to this. Am was district, are they all Ambling?
I didn't even look at them till being smart.
All right. Don't sign it.
No, no, no.
Don't sign it.
They just move back here.
Just give it back to her.
He's gonna sign and move.
Send it down to her.
He's got him with lots of east and east.
I held off, I looked.
That's right.
Not Jay might have cried his heart out.
No, I was, I was being careful.
I'm all, I'm just on the brakes.
I'm being careful.
No supply. Well, it's, it's happened, sorry. Yeah, that wouldn't work right, would it? Well, it was for food, groceries, I'm like, what? Grocery, huh? They're buying groceries or whatever, that's what messed me up.
They're gonna roll the refrigerator shut after they buy.
Yeah.
These people stealing it.
I can remember talking to, I wanna keep people out of my refrigerator, too, one there. I might make a motion to approve. All in favor?
Think of minutes or.
Does your minutes go down there?
Yeah, maybe I'll step in here.
I don't have it on mine. There they are.
Who did that?
Uh, Toby and Sam. I just, anybody mind them, because they both said.
I know, same time, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna argue.
No road crossings, okay. Question, if Lynn Oyster is under sheriff, first deputy, when Gary Mass is under sheriff, first deputy. I'll make a motion.
It's Friday, it was Glenn's last day.
So do we need, all need to sign them?
Yeah, just in the way that I'm on.
Rodney was gone last day.
I think it was Friday.
Didn't even have a party for?
Not found.
I wasn't in charge of that.
Do we all need to sign?
Yes. Wait a minute, I'm just, they're, oh, your ports.
Armour.
Second. All in favor? Award bid for security system and video system for the Alfa County Fairgrounds.
I haven't heard from Troy.
I talked to Troy, but after, after I talked to him, I learned a lot more.
That's the only bit that we have, we got the.
He said to have people come in there at nighttime and not get charged or something else, and they don't know who it is, leave the lights on and everything else or whatever.
We give it twice.
And a lot of, and with this, you can also do the closed circuit, or like, the computers, of the computers and everything.
concession stand and stuff.
They could, they could even send it out, and he said there's.
Streamline it.
Was there one or two rodeo associations, said, if you'll do this, we'll, we'll bring rodeos in and everything else.
Wow, that's a whole different deal.
And he said they, when they first, you know, when they did all this, he, he had the money put back, it just never got it done.
Well, I wonder if this will take care of itself as a security system, so it don't get stolen. That's a lot of stuff.
Probably put up on a, I'm sure, cameras. But he said, yeah, there's people come in at nighttime, you don't know who's using it or whatever, with the lights on, stuff like.
That's good.
So anyhow, I, actually, I talked to him. For about thirty miles, speaking. He said, go, they were, Fairwood's agreed with it, so I make a motion to approve it.
There.
All in favor?
All right.
After I learned.
Yeah, very interesting.
And it should be good, cause we have a good night, you know, the more we, the more events we can have there, the more money we can bring in.
That better be on this.
And you don't wanna lock it.
It's good.
We tried that to start with, they get torn the locks.
That is, I don't recommend.
We had entered no red door up here. I'm at the walk-in door, they just rip the latches off.
Thank you.
This is just, um, I think that they filed to us that our unclaimed minerals.
Oh.
Um, interest, so we just tried to put it on the agenda to let it out there again, that if people want to know.
My name on here?
It'll be at the W, at the end.
The W's are the A's, are they?
Yeah, the W.
Anyway, we just run it through the, um, meeting and.
A C Tucker, G A Tucker, J Tucker, and Roger Tucker.
Wish they were all related to me, they're all good people, I'm sure.
Tucker, J Tucker, okay.
Oh, we didn't say what it was.
I know it.
You said it was at the beginning in the alphabet, so I'm just assuming it was A he was talking about.
Two Tuckers don't make a right.
He's not paying attention, please do not repeat that, Kyle.
Like there's Lance D, Lance D Warner on it, if that is, but, uh, with no zero, no, yeah. Oh, wow. Do we need, we don't need to sign anything, or is there what?
I just need a motion that you guys accept it, and then we put it in our vault, and if anybody calls and.
The move. Say it.
All in favor?
Just a funny.
I, sit that back here. But has Lance D Warner on there, which would be my cousin's son, but has zero over here, interest, so why do we have his name on it? And R E Warner was Uncle Shorty.
I don't even know why they.
Right.
Send it out, but.
River Ridge Construction Request, we add it to bid list and written quote list for bridge and roadway labor and pro, labor and projects.
I had a phone call, like, at seven forty-five on Friday morning, it was Brody from River Ridge, and he said that he received a bid once from us, but the second time, he didn't, I'm like going, we haven't went out for bid for anything, what are you talking about? He says, yes, you guys just opened them a couple of weeks ago, I'm like going, we haven't opened any bids.
What did you bid?
I said, now, we did written quotes on labor, and he says, well, how do I get added to that list? I said, contact the commissioners, and he says, well, I thought I had, and so I said.
We don't have.
You know where you had to live.
We don't have the list, we don't know.
So he asked, he asked to be put on the agenda, asked to let you guys know that he wants to be added to those, so I just did what was asked of me.
All we gotta do is just have three quotes.
Three quotes, you know, you have.
Use every one.
But just be careful, if somebody's asked to be added on to that.
They got a little problem right now going on, Kate County's River Ridge, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want them.
So, uh. Oh, what kind of motion are we gonna make here? A lot more.
I don't think we need any, we got.
Could be no motion.
We don't have a list, don't like.
Yeah, you can just take no action on it. You can make a motion, state no action.
I'm trying to think of that word, thank you, yeah.
Hold, hold second.
Who first then answer?
I'll make a motion, no action. All.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Revolution is throwing a fire truck for. Alling. That's the year after I graduated.
You need that.
You know how that truck is?
Protect your name.
Did you graduate, Wayne?
Yeah, I did, look, okay. I went to, you know, oh, you went to school.
This is the one that Stanley Rick.
Stanley Rick what?
Uh, got the salvage on it.
Five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. I went to McQuillan University School of Hard Knocks.
That's right, it's called.
And they were some.
That's why they called the school, you went to school.
McQuillan U.
Sure they.
M U. Yeah, you can tell everybody, but we can tell everybody we went to M U.
Yeah.
McQuillan University.
Yeah. Mark, how about Mark Cat University?
Yeah.
I probably. Been on that fire truck.
For the reason the fire truck was called out.
Oh, yeah, I could be the reason the fire truck was called out, for sure.
Let's show moves that we.
All in favor?
All right.
Stand. You gotta remember, Kyle, laws like that, a lot different back then, they just take you up and go home. Or they get you home, your friends can get that, like, you might, like, S O B home. Right, Lenny?
Heard that.
Alfa County C B R five-year plan. That's all we need to get.
Hold my late night out there.
Get my phone, I ain't gotta remember.
Check when you guys come in to sign their few, it's that way, but I had time to look at it.
I gotta looks the ones, the districts, ones and twos and threes, it don't take very long. Two and a half to three inches down around here, I know. You got my torch here?
We, I only had an inch and eight tenths, and then it rained, it's, you know, missed it that little bit more, but I don't imagine it, I can't know that it's a whole lot of, so. Not quite two inches.
Yeah, water running everywhere, a little on.
Eighth Street look like a river.
Yeah, it'll rain two tenths, and Cherokee looks like a river. I liked it, though, cause I wasn't so much, I have to do the salt fires on Saturday, so I came, came through town and found all the puddles, washed the bottom off.
Yeah.
Go right behind, go after behind United, and also there, that alley, it's about that deep to clean it up. That's where all the.
There's a good, there's a couple of good ones on Ohio, I like there.
When somebody.
On Grand, usually, as she.
Yeah.
I'd already, it's gone down.
I come in to help, just to set up for, um, business up on our grub sale and.
Few items they had, so. Went up. Yeah. You know. My son went to cross, I had a, got sand in the wheel, he said, just go down through there.
Clean the other knees, I didn't clean up. Cherokee needs an automatic car wash.
Needs a.
Automatic car wash.
Keep people going all the way to Allen.
Alabama don't have an automatic car wash either, do they? Try to get, try to get the, I have some difference in the company out here.
Me no used to have a nice car wash, it wasn't an automatic one, but it was a nice.
Ringwood.
I used to go to Ringwood a lot.
Is Ring, is Ringwood still open?
Ah, I've driven right by, I can't tell.
Yeah, I haven't been through there, there, yeah, the others used to be really nice too, it wasn't automated, but it was nice.
Weird bucket, but that's all good.
All I know is one guy, guy drove a combine, started working combine, I was like, man, it'll take him a while.
That's what we all used to park at at Ringwood when there was a storm coming through.
Right.
Used to be that way here too.
Yeah.
You can be there on a weekend, that makes, cause that's a pretty fancy car.
New motion?
Yep. You all agree? You agree on it, right?
Yeah, they reduced it from thirty-five to seventy-seven almost, cause I'm gonna have to do your money.
That's just, yeah.
You made it?
I'll do it, say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any unforeseen business anywhere?
Move we go.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?